After seven, I'm sure he's going to be connecting.
All right.
Hang on, I'll let you know once the YouTube's on.
Yeah, the only thing I don't have, did you send the agenda?
I sent that with the invitation on Monday.
Monday, all right, let me check.
Yeah. And we are live on YouTube.
Very good.
Shannon, how come it's not snowing in your picture?
It's magic.
Not only does Shannon do municipal stuff, but he built a dome over a part of Clark Summit.
Watch out, I see John Durden has a hammer.
I don't have a gavel. I have to call and order our meeting for tonight.
All right.
Tonight is the Borough Clark Summit Planning Commission meeting, not the work session, the planning, actual meeting, Wednesday, December 16th, 2020. I have a, an agenda before us, I'd like to share my screen. We have some edits to it. I'm going to go ahead and make those adjustments. This is the Planning Commission meeting.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay, it's okay. I have to enable editing. Okay, so with the edits, we're going to do, how do we do this officially, strike through? And quit meeting. I'll get that font corrected in a minute.
And get the date right, too. Man, I was really not with it when I did that.
Okay, we have an agenda before us this evening. Before I read the agenda, tonight in attendance are myself, John Durden, Ed Yosinkas, Shannon Brown, Carol Rubel, Mike Colley, Jim Basalaga, and Virginia Kehoe. Is there an agenda to accept, is there a motion to accept this agenda with the corrections I just noted?
I'll make a motion to accept tonight's agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Ed Yosinkas, seconded by Carol Rubel, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, motion carries, four oh.
Okay, John Kazista is joining us now.
Okay. John, are you live? Can you hear us?
He's still connecting.
Do I need to do anything, Virginia, on my end?
No, just wait till he gets... I'm not sure what's, what the delay is.
John, I apologize, but I will be right back.
No problem.
There's John. John, can you hear us? Mr. Kazista? Nope, but got it. Still having problems. John, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Yay, okay. Mr. Durden, we can begin. We have Mr. Kazista on.
John, we just approved the agenda with the edits that are being shared on my screen right now.
Okay.
We have two items for new business, Perumba, lot line adjusted. Did I pronounce that correctly, Mr. Perumba?
I'm unmuting them right now, hang on.
Yes, you did. Excellent.
Thank you. And some discussion for lid ordinance, low-impact design. In order, we could take care of Mr. Perumba first, if we could. Get the information, there's a lot line adjustment. Oh, that's my garage, sorry, folks. Make sure I bring up the right one. Stop sharing that, and... Bring up screen two. Okay, can everybody see the plan view?
Yes.
Yes.
I have it zoomed in on the existing condition. And I, I believe it's pretty straightforward, Mr. Perumba, what I'm viewing right now is you have a property at the corner of Lilac Lane and Grandview Street?
Uh, the actual, the property I have is the small parcel over here.
I am sorry, I apologize, yes.
Oh, no worries.
And the other property is owned by Richard and Louise Lee?
It was up until about two weeks ago, that has changed ownership, so that's the only thing that's changed in the particular plan.
Okay, and they had previously owned the rear lot?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and then the intention is to subdivide and join that rear lot, both your property?
Correct, so it would be just a straight rectangle.
Okay, and what about the new owners at the corner of Lilac and Grandview?
As far as, are they on board?
Yes, sir.
Yes, no, they're, we, Chris O'Boyle's our realtor, and we redrew the contract with the new owners. Um, so they're, they purchased the lot with the understanding that this was going to be a part of it. Um, because we were under contract with Mrs. Lee before, um, they put the house on the market. Then, when this took a little bit longer to get survey done and et cetera, um, they went through with the sale of the house, and then we drew up a new contract with the new owners, so they're 100% on board still.
Okay, okay. Uh, are there any comments, or is there any other evidence anybody would like to see or share? Do you want to see Google Earth or anything?
I, can I just ask who the new owners are of lot number two?
I think it is, or?
Yeah, lot number two?
Sure, I can, I know, one is Kelly Wise and Isaiah, I'll give you Isaiah's last name in a sec. Uh, Nelson, so Kelly Wise and Isaiah Nelson.
And I, I asked that question because I want to make sure that no one on the Planning Commission has any conflict of interest with an undisclosed owner that we obviously wouldn't know about. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Michael, from a, from a legal standpoint, do we need to get this plan updated with the new owner information?
I did talk to Bill Sennepetis, who's the surveyor, and he said that we would just need to change the names on it before you guys would officially be able to sign it, um, which is, he's just waiting for approval, um, from you guys. If we're good with everything else, he can get it just updated.
So let me, let me ask you this.
I apologize, I thought I was the Michael you were talking to.
Oh, no, that's, you, you are, actually. But now the other Michael is going to ask a question, okay? The lot that you currently own?
Yes.
Is, is the front lot on Lilac Lane?
Yes.
Now, did you buy the entire parcel, which is the parcel to the rear of the property, which is being split in half?
No, we're only, so we end up at that first line where 75.33 is drawn.
Mm-hmm.
And we are just drawing, so see where, where Mouse is currently, we're just drawing a straight line up to make that even, so our lots, because every other lot on Lilac goes straight back, except ours. We stopped at 75.33, and the Lee lot went up and then over, so we're just cutting off the toes of the foot, pretty much.
What, what I'm asking, what I mean is, did you take title to what, what is the, the rear lot, the lot that only fronts on Grandview?
We will be, yes, we haven't taken title to anything yet, we haven't heard.
Okay, all right, thank you, all right.
You're welcome.
Let, let me understand, are, are we saying that you're taking a portion of that lot that's behind?
Correct, so the portion, I believe at this particular point in time, that that lot behind is actually all one piece. I believe the Lee lot goes up and then over, I believe that whole L-shaped lot that they have is one particular parcel. Um, or it's under one deed, it shows us parcel one and parcel two. Um, we are only taking a portion of that, that goes straight back, and then our attorney will draw up two separate deeds to make it all one with us, and then Ms. Wise and Mr. Nelson.
So then the owner that's, the new owner that's on, uh, Grandview and Lilac Corner there will, will still be owning the other portion?
Correct, yes, they will own the portion behind their, their parcel one, so.
Okay.
This is for Mike Calley, uh, does that make this two subdivisions then?
You know.
Because it's a little complicated, I'm, I didn't.
It's a, it's a little bit more complicated by, uh, the fact that we should, and I think it's form over substance in all honesty, we should go from existing condition to, well, you know, it's, the, the odd thing is, it's the same parcel, the Lee's on the same parcel, so no, I think we're okay with that, as I look at it more.
Yeah, it's two parcels, but it's on the same deed.
Right.
Right, so it's really only one subdivision.
Oh, I see, okay. I, I can see the deed or anything like that, so it's, uh, okay.
Shannon, that was, that was my thought initially, too, that we had to show the L-shaped property as being the existing property, but the fact that they're two parcels, I think we're okay with that.
Let me ask another question, um, does it, there's another party involved here. Does it matter that we don't have that party represented in this particular situation? As, as we see it here now?
By, by approving the map, we do not, we do not have any part in the property transfer itself, so I think that that's okay, we, you know, we never approve a deed, we approve a map for the most part, and sign off on the map, but I do think we need a correction to the owner of lot number two, if that property has been transferred.
Okay.
In other words, Ms. Wise and Mr. Nelson should be listed as the owners with their reference, reference on the property?
Right, Mr. Perumba said he would get the new, the, the changes and bring them in so that we could get those signed and back to him for report, recording.
Correct, that, that'll be easy, that's on my part, I can handle that.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, the questions I asked have been answered to my satisfaction, anyway, thank you.
Yeah, it would, it would be good, it would be good to have some recognition by the new owners that, you know, you're, that they're in agreement with this.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
Would, uh, would a copy of the signed sales contract be sufficient? I could forward that to you guys within the hour.
Can, can I just jump in here, if you take a look at, under the proposed condition, John, if you move it down to the two squares below? Another, there you go, there is a ownership certification below, a little bit... Yeah, move it north, I think. Under proposed, John, it's to the other side. Now push it up. Keep going.
Not moving, not moving fast enough, Michael.
I just didn't know if you know where I was going. If you see, there's a proposed ownership certification, and that would have to be changed, and that would be their acquiescence in what's going on.
Right. So again, we're just approving the maps, it, it's still going to be up to Mr. Perumba to get the, the new owners to sign this before it's filed at the courthouse.
Right, and you'll have to get the change made, you'd have to make a motion to approve it, subject to an amendment, you know, to put in the, the current owners, or even the equitable owners if they haven't transferred yet, and then approve the map if that's your desire.
I'd like to see the correction, uh, and I think this is a simple minor subdivision, I think the chair could sign this, correct, Virginia?
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, would anybody like to make a motion in that regard? That we would approve this proposed sub, minor subdivision with the condition that the current ownership information has been updated and corrected on this plan?
I'll make that motion, John.
Okay, thank you, Carol, is there a second?
I make a second.
Motion's been made by Carol Rubel, seconded by Ed Yosinkas, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes, is there a nay?
John.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes, okay, so that's five yeses, okay. Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Perumba, if you could get that updated and back to us, uh, we'll make an effort to get down to the Borough Building and sign that for you.
Excellent, okay, so I can get that done, I'll, I'll talk to Mr. Sennepetis, um, tonight, as soon as we get off the, off the call. Um, he'll update it, then I'll get the signatures by, so my wife and I would sign under the right side. Uh, Kelly and Isaiah would sign on the left side, and then we, once they're signed, then we bring that one signed copy down to, to the Borough Building, and then you guys take care of it, correct?
Five, five copies, Virginia, I believe?
Yes.
You still want five? Okay.
Yeah.
And, 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 no, I mean, your attorney will guide you through this, but this needs to be notarized.
Correct, right.
And everything, because, just so that you know, yeah, yeah.
Right, 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 okay, so when do we, do you guys have to sign it before we get it notarized, or?
No, you have to get it.
No, your signatures need to be notarized.
Okay, so we get our signatures done first, finish off that, and then bring it to you guys for final.
Right.
But if we get that done within the next week, I guess my question is, I don't have to wait until January's planning meeting?
No.
Or, we could do all this within?
Right, the vote was, the vote was that it was approved, subject to that change, so once we see that change, uh, our chair can sign it. Mr. Perumba, the only trick here is that the office is closed for business without appointment, so when you're ready to bring it in, you need to call us first, so we can meet you and open up the, the building for you.
Awesome, I appreciate that.
No problem.
And I have, I have one other caveat, I would bring in a copy of the deed reference, or a copy of the deed for the other owner, so that, uh, the chairman could look it over, and if he has any questions, he can call me.
The new deed, from transfer of title, understood, okay.
And Mr. Perumba, follow what your attorney, yeah, follow what your attorney or whatever is saying with this as well, let them know what happened tonight, but just so that you understand, we're simply approving a subdivision conditionally, so that doesn't mean that this is yours and stuff like that.
No, 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 I get that.
I, I, I just want to make it clear that, uh, yeah, that there is.
No, understood, I just wanted to know the procedure, I didn't want to wait till January, if we could do it sooner, awesome.
No, we're done.
I appreciate it, have a great night, Merry Christmas to y'all.
Thank you, bye.
To Michael, you're well-named, Michael.
Thank you, you as well, I'll, I'll try not to take over your speaking next time.
That's okay, and I don't have to speak, I'm happy. It's hard to believe. Nice, man.
All right. So we're, uh, we're completed with that, now we're onto our lid ordinance, and, uh, Virginia, what, what is the impetus behind this? Other than, I think we were talking about this during the, uh, the subdivision and land development.
That's, well, we were going over the new zoning ordinance and so forth. Uh, it, I, I had a note that with our next meeting, we wanted to talk about whether or not, or how we should, uh, deal with a low impact. So the impetus is, that I had a note that said that we were going to meet, next meeting, we were going to talk about it. So let's talk. Now, Mike Calley called me today, and we were talking, this is something that would be seriously needed if this was Clark Summit of 50 years ago. Clark Summit of today has very little development that really, this makes a difference to, so the question becomes, should we take the time to deal with this when it really doesn't affect us too much? Or should we go ahead and do it because even though we really don't have it, direct a, uh, relationship, it would be good showing for the state that we have it? I don't know, Shannon's got the most experience with that, so I'm kind of thinking he might have a, something to say here.
Well, I defer to Mike's, you know, guidance on what, you know, legally where we are. I agree that, you know, the, the municipality is built out, so, uh, but, but this could have effects, particularly if people are doing redevelopment on their property, or expanding property, or making changes to it. Uh, I, I don't, and it depends on how much pressure, uh, we get from the D E P and, uh, the EPA on, you know, MS4 compliance. I don't know where we stand with that, Virginia, maybe you can share, uh, with us, but I know that, uh, there has been some talk about stepping up, um, compliance requirements.
Right, these are all things, this gesture, though, would be entirely symbolic, it really would be, but it's something that might be significant. Mike had mentioned today, though, that maybe the question should be to council, do they want to spend the money, because Mike's involvement in this is going to be, you know, it's not free.
Somebody's, somebody's involvement will be, I mean, whether it's, whether it's me, or the planner, or
Right.
the solicitor for the, for the council, it's not, it's wholly not inexpensive, let's put it that way.
Right, so the question, so maybe what we should do is throw this to council and ask them if they want to, if they feel it's worthy of investing the time, and if so, then bring it back to you guys to discuss further. What do you think?
Sounds good.
Well, the only, yeah, I, I agree, but at the same time, what are the impacts for our participation? Or for not participating, I guess is the question.
It, the, the MS4 is really, they have, as of right now, they kind of weigh different things, and as long as you're making certain numbers, you're good. And so this is something that may help us, we're good right now, we, we're making, we're doing more than enough credit-wise to keep MS4 happy, but this might be something that, if we needed in the future, would be good to have. I, you know, it might be that they, in, in the next couple, honestly, MS4 has been kind of quiet the past couple of years. I think it has to do with the changes in the federal government. I have a feeling it's going to change again in January, and we might see more pressure then. So.
Well, I know that there's at least one organization, I, I got an email, let me just check, I think it was today or yesterday. Uh, yeah, that may be changing, uh, people are looking forward to, or some people are looking forward to, uh, perhaps some enhanced, uh, um, compliance requirements under a new, uh, federal administration, so, whether that hits us, I have no idea, so.
So.
Well, you know, all of the ordinances that we do, and, and this is kind of backtracking a little bit, but all of the ordinance we do are prospective, right, the zoning ordinance is prospective, uh, it's not a look-back ordinance. So if this is needed, or if it is an enhancement to some standing for the borough that I'm not aware of, um, I'm just asking the question because if you're going to paddle and not go out, you know, not, not move, then why are you paddling?
Yeah, I kind of think my suggestion, from my perspective, would be to, let's see what council thinks, but I wouldn't push it until there is a more clear reason to, because we're not, it's not something that we actually need on a day-to-day basis. If we were South Abbott, we had the kind of development that they're doing, I would be pushing for this right now. But it's really not going to impact us, so how much time and effort do we want on something that's really not going to impact us? Let's see if we need it, and if council wants the money invested in it, and then move forward with it.
So, Virginia, I think I, I think I'm agreeing with what I'm hearing in that, you know, any, any potential goodwill that we might gather from having this enacted, has to be weighed against the potential expense in getting to that point. So in terms of process, it seems to me like council needs to say yes, and then, otherwise, we have a lot of energy invested without the guy who signs the check being willing to pay the bill.
Yeah, that's kind of what, where my thought is at with this.
Yeah. I, I agree with that.
Yeah, there's a couple of things from a practical standpoint, you know, we already mentioned, you know, that we're nearly fully built out. Uh, that's one item, the other item is the existing slopes we have in the borough, we are very steep here. Um, I was just going over some of the, the walking that we do around Flora Park, and, you know, I call it cardio kill when you start going to Carnation Drive from the bottom. Uh, at its peak, I was just measuring, it's actually a 20% slope, it's very steep.
Wow.
To get groundwater infiltration and you know, there, there's very few areas that really, that back to the curb. You know, they talk about riparian areas, uh, those are the areas around rivers and streams, the only place we really have like that really is, uh, down by Miles Auto Parts, that creek. But again, there's properties bordering every side of it, and where it finally discharges is very industrial. It's kind of like, a lot of effort to get no benefit, really, and it's, I'm just, from a practical engineering standpoint, it's not making sense. If we had an area that was farmland, and it was highly developable, developable and desirable, uh, this would make a lot of sense. But I'm just, I'm just not seeing it. I think of Waverly, I think of Wondern Township, I'm thinking Newton Ransom, those areas make a lot of sense, and just, and it's not really policy, but their stance on development, they don't want it, they want to remain agricultural. Uh, so they're very protective of the land as it is, as it stands, uh, but they would be the ones, I would say, that would probably be benefiting the most from such a, uh, such an ordinance.
May I, may I add something? Uh, I'm basically agreeing with, uh, what John is saying, and agreeing with the approach, except that I would just mention, I don't know if they'll change the situation at all, but if we went to council, which we're probably going to do, but if we went to council and didn't say, "We absolutely feel that there's some valid reason to do this," uh, there, I, I would be surprised if they were willing to say, "Yes, let's do it, let's, let's spend money." I just don't think they're going to do that.
No, they, they will if it comes from EPA and MS4, you know, if the EPA is saying, "We need to see these gestures, and you need to account for certain things," you know, "We want to see a draft of a low-income development plan," then council's going to say, "Let's spend the time and money to do it, because we need it for the federal government." But as long as they don't need it, there is no incentive for them to ask for it.
Right. You know, I, I just, I just thought I'd mention that. One other thing I'd, I'd like to mention, a, a, along with what John was just saying, uh, where I live, that's property, um, it's actually in another, another borough, but right out on, uh, State Street, uh, along where John was saying, where the stream flow, flows, there's a railroad track there, and whatever, there's timbering going on. The, it's, it's just, it's at the beginning of our development in Clark Summit, but, but it's across the street, and there's timbering going on for maybe a mile approximately, and what I'm observing for the past many months, we've taken out a lot of timber, well, first of all, the train, you'd never even know there was a train there before, but now it's, it's in my bedroom, uh, but in addition to that, more along with John was saying, that whole slope that goes down into that railroad bed, and I guess the stream down there, or whatever, um, is just being somewhat eroded, and I, 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 again, it's not even our borough, but I predict that there's going to be problems there.
That is definitely something I would love to see addressed, that's a concern, but yeah, it's not us.
John, is that property along Oxford Road?
Yes. Yes, and, and it's, it's been timbered dramatically over the past many months, um, maybe a year, maybe more than a year. Um, and what I'm noticing now is, uh, that they're, they, it's, it's really taken out, I mean, it's clear, it's, you could hear the traffic down there, you could see down there, and the homes that are in Clark Summit that are viewing that within 150 feet, uh, their life has changed dramatically. I mean, I don't know what can be done about that, or whatever, and I'm not even proposing we do anything, I'm just following up on what you're saying, and I, and I could see erosion there for.
John, could you give, could you give me a landmark?
Yeah, let me give you, uh, I'm going to share my screen.
You're good, John. You're good, John.
All right. Can everybody see?
No, no, oh, yeah, yeah, no.
So Oakford Road, Clark and Route 11, 611 are right here. This yellow line, I believe, is what's representing the border between South Avington Township and Clark Summit Borough.
Theoretically, it's off, though, because all those houses to the, uh, Oakford Road, everything on Oakford and to the right is borough.
That's our borough.
But everything to the left of Oakford, all the wooded area is not in the borough. But I believe it's South Abbott.
All right. Thank you. I got it now. I was, I was in another part of town for some reason. Okay.
Yeah, well, yeah, because you're
I'm very familiar with that.
My house is right there.
Yeah.
Third Houseup or whatever. But, uh, yeah, uh, and this picture now is obviously something older because I think, I think it'd be much more open now based on all the trees that have been cut out of there. But I mean, I just bring this up in, to tie into what you were saying about erosion and so forth. And it just, but enough said. I'm not proposing anything or whatever.
But 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 John, Kazista, I, I, I'm glad you brought that up because that has been one of my concerns uh, here in the borough, that it's always a sticky situation because you don't want to tell people what they want to do. But I I have been shocked at the number of trees that have been cut in the borough just over the last 10 months. Uh, now, I understand, you know, some of those are ash trees, and the ash trees are susceptible to disease, but I, it's shocking. Uh, and I I recognize that maybe trying to tie the tree and the erosion issues and things like that to MS four may not be the best way, but I I really do think that there's a problem. You know, I'm seeing that on Greenwood, the clear cut uh, stuff. We're seeing it, you know, around us, uh, here in this side of town. Uh, and, you know, it just seems like these tree cutting companies are coming in and uh, clear cutting lots. It really has been shocking. Uh, you know, I know right from our property here, I could count probably at this point, probably 25, you know, mature trees that have been cut down. It may sound like no big deal, but uh, it is a big deal when you see how much of this is going on.
Well, Shannon, are those people maintaining their properties or is it timbering operations? I mean, there's two different things. You know, I I just had major tree work done in my yard. I had my maples trimmed. I I had to take down an old flowering decorative tree because it was starting to rot and someone was attacking the trunk and was
Yeah.
it was basically dying. And there are a lot of trees that have been dying. There was, we had two wet, really bad wet seasons in a row. And I, and I can't remember the name of the, uh, the, the species of mold, but it's killing a lot of trees. Uh, you'll see that they're defoliated. There's no leaves on them. There's very little growth, or what you're are seeing is very poor, unhealthy trees. So I don't know what that, what you're seeing. Um, I know with the clear cutting that John's describing, that is a concern. But that's outside of our, our limits or borough.
Yeah.
Actually, the borough has an interest in preserving as many trees as possible, even on private property. But, um, we have very little that we can do about it. What we will see or are probably going to see at some point in the future is, um, is where our, our sewer bill currently covers sewer and stormwater. We might end up separating those two out so that instead of $52 a month, you're paying 20, and I'm making up numbers, 26 for sewer and 26 for stormwater. And then we can then go in and address individually ways for people to save money on their, their sewer, on their, their stormwater by doing things like increasing the number of trees on their property or putting in rain gardens or something. So when you hear about the rain tax, this is what it, it, this is what it is. And it's actually, people are paying for it. We're right now, stormwater controls are being paid for. They're just not separated out and giving the people an opportunity to to, um, affect their taxes. And and actually, a rain tax allows them to do that. So it's not the bad thing that people think it is. But this is where we could work with the neighbors, you know, in town and say, I know you're taking down a tree that's going to affect your, your your suit stormwater tax. But if you want to replace a tree, it'll leave it neutral. If you want to add two trees, you can actually reduce it, something like that. So that's, I think, coming in the future.
And and that, I think, would be worth the Borough Council's time to take a serious look at that.
Definitely would like to.
Yeah, yeah. And and we can talk about it in terms of MS four and that simple proposal that I had sent out. You could do something like this, like the Clean and Green programs that people understand. My concern is, and John Durden, I, I, I fully appreciate people maintaining, you know, the trees in the property. That does not appear to be the case uh, with all of the trees, with the ash trees, absolutely. Uh, but these are mature trees that people just, I I have no idea why. Uh, people are just cutting down and nor, you know, it's enough that you begin saying, holy cow. Uh, and I know that these trees are not dead. They're not, uh, you know, dying or, or, you know, uh, the other types of issues and stuff. It just seems like over the past 10 months, uh, since the pandemic, it's just uh, in my opinion, been shocking, uh, to see how many, uh, trees have come down. Uh, and there are
I have to agree with you there, Shannon.
Yeah, spruce maple, uh, you know, beautiful walnuts and stuff like that. You know, just chipped up and shredded. And, uh, so I, I like that idea. I'm not a huge fan of a rain tax. But most people don't realize, as Virginia is indicating, we're already paying for that. Uh, but this incentivizes people to say, hey, I want to keep trees because the EPA, the DEP, it is the most cost effective way, uh, to address this. And there was actually a tree survey done of Clark Summit Borough. I think it was back in 2016. If I remember, it's called Open Tree. Um, you know, you can go on the website and see it, and they calculate out. And we're saying, you know, according to that simple website, we're saving probably $112,000 a year uh, by maintaining our tree cover. Uh, you know, if we started assessing properties for that, uh, you know, their, their stormwater bill would go up, uh, at least noticeably, uh, because of that, that offset.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, uh, two, two comments, Shannon. Uh, yes, you're right. Since the pandemic, a lot of people are at home and doing home improvement projects, believe it or not. Uh, I agree with you on that, with that regard. I I do know that a lot of trees have fallen victim to certain diseases. Past two wet seasons. Um, you could see our neighbors' trees, a lot of mature spruces are dying. There, there's no needles are falling off. Um, so whatever the circumstances with the people are taking the trees down with, I I can't say for sure one way or the other. But, um, yeah, if we could keep more trees, the better, certainly from a stormwater standpoint.
Yeah, at least if we can encourage replacement of any trees. I understand there are times where trees need to be cut down, but if we can get our residents to replace them when they take them down, that, it doesn't that it's still, we still have a negative for a while because a mature tree does a whole lot more than a immature tree, but at least we know that we've got something coming.
Right. Right. I, I personally, over the years, have kept as many trees as I could. I try to maintain them, try to keep them healthy. You know, I remember when we first moved our house, we had these dying Russian olive trees in the backyard. They were dying. Eventually to the point where they were coming down on their own, they had to be removed. We have mature spruce trees between my neighbor's property and my own. And they were starting to lean. You know, they're very shallow root systems. And the only reason they came down is because of that, between all our utility wires. So, yeah, I I get it. There's reasons why people do take trees down. I can't say it's always for aesthetic reasons.
But it is also amazing how many people do do it for, I'm surprised at the number of people that I've heard complain about trees because they have to rake leaves.
That's right. That's right.
Well, I I can tell you that's what, yeah, yeah. And that's, uh, you know, again, you know, I'm not trying to be proposed nanny state type stuff that we're, you know, coming around and chat, but I think that there needs to be, you know, we're a tree, I understand, I think we're a tree city designation. This is an important extension of our entire communities. And and I I'll repeat it again, that I have been shocked. Uh, you know, I've been here, you know, this is not that I'm new to the area or whatever. I've been coming up with 30 years. You know, I've never seen the amount of cutting that has occurred, uh, that has occurred over roughly the past 10 months. It's really been startling. And I know in some of those cases, um, and one of the, well, anyway.
Yeah, listen, let me add some, Shannon, I, I agree with you because I've noticed the same thing. As a matter of fact, if I'm not mistaken, up on Main, when Main goes up perpendicular from, uh, State Street, doesn't it?
Mm hmm. Yes.
Top there. I, maybe I'm sleeping or what, but I was driving there just recently. And I wasn't paying attention. I'm doing something. And I looked up and I thought, where the heck am I? And I looked and there's a lot up at the top, which every tree is cut down.
Yeah.
I don't know what they're up to or what they're doing, but I was shocked. And I, and I've seen that kind of thing before. They also do it with John that there are trees that have to be so. Uh, but I, I agree with Shannon that in fact, people are just cutting trees down. They're just cutting trees down. And, uh,
So.
if you look at something in our development, when John was pointing there, Gentilly is part of our development, Gentilly Drive. Just above that, there's, it's all forest area. And, uh, which, just above my home, God forbid, if somebody starts timbering later.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm getting an awful lot of background noise. Is anybody else?
Yeah, I have a show.
Yes, it's awful.
Yeah.
Somebody has a TV on in the back.
Yes.
Yeah, somebody's got something going.
I can't, I'm having trouble picking up. I'm sorry.
Mike, can you turn down the TV? Are you still hearing the TV?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, Mike, I don't know. I think it's us. I think you need to turn it down more. Do you hear it now?
No.
Nope.
Uh, it's my husband. Sorry.
Oh, boy.
So sorry.
John Durden, uh, can you, since you were sharing your screen, could you quickly bring up that www dot opentreemap dot org? Uh, website. I don't know. Again, I don't want to hold people up tonight and stuff like that, but
Here to discuss.
Yeah, I, I, I think that maybe
Tree.org?
Open tree map dot org.
Hey, can you see that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, and then, uh, how am I in that? Uh, I'm in PA tree map is what I, uh.
How do you, how do you get to that point?
I don't know. I I have a link in the chat window there that goes directly to it. I don't know if you can see the chat window for Zoom.
Oh, let me see. Let me, I'm just going to stop sharing for a moment.
Oh, there it is. Yeah, if you open up chat, Shannon did do a link.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
Okay, if you're going to reshare this. Okay. So we want to
Yeah, if you could go to the top there, search by location and just type in Clark Summit, PA, uh, it should zero in on, uh, there you go. And this is a tree map of, of Clark Summit Borough that shows. Uh, and I think if we did a comparison today, uh, compared to even just a year ago, uh, it's really quite striking. But this goes through, you can click on these trees, see exactly what kind of trees are there uh, and do those kinds of, uh, assessments. If they're marked in the green, it it'll tell you what, uh, kinds of trees are in the borough. And it can also do assessments of it. This was done, I think this was done back in, like I said, 2016, I want to say.
I believe you're right.
Might have been 2017, but it was recent. I mean, within the past few years. But my point is, I I point this out because this could be used as a baseline for, you know, if people are to mitigate, you know, if people have trees on their property, we want to encourage people to have trees that and to replace if they're cutting to at least replace those trees. This could be used as, as a rough baseline to show where we're at as of roughly 2016 in, in the borough.
Shannon, I might be calling on you when council's ready to start looking at redoing the sewer and stormwater fees.
Oh, yeah, yeah, let me
Yeah, I think your expertise would be good in getting that, in getting, trying to develop a plan because you know, you're starting at ground zero, figuring out something that's brand new.
Yeah.
You've got some insight.
And I think that we could incentivize it because I, I am not volunteering to pay more taxes. I'm not volunteering other people to pay more taxes. But I think that if the program like this is set up properly, uh, you could have something comparable to what's called Clean and Green, uh, which applies in more rural areas that effectively, if you put in a rain garden and, you know, put more trees on your property and you maintain those trees, you can offset all or at least a significant portion of the stormwater fees, uh, in, in the community. And everybody benefits from that because you know, it's a lot better to have the trees on your property and the rain gardens actually doing something rather than paying a tax for, you know, $150 or whatever it is, uh, you know, that goes, no offense to the Borough Council, but who knows where that money goes? Uh, you know, you're encouraging people to actually do something here.
Exactly. It gives them more responsibility in maintaining their environment, but it also gives them the ability. People need to understand that a rain tax isn't a, an addition, a new tax. You're paying it anyway. It's just a new way of splitting it out, and it allows the homeowner to have more control and involvement in their taxes. So it's, it's actually a good thing.
I I'd just like to jump in here for a second. I, I've been listening very carefully. And it seems to me like there are a lot of different threads in this braid of conversation that we're talking about, the timbering versus the property maintenance, the incentivizing to replace trees versus the preference to not have to rake leaves. So there are a lot of things that are bubbling in the pot. I would like to suggest that there's an opportunity here. I'm not sure that it belongs to planning. I'm not sure where it belongs, but there are only two ways to modify human behavior. One is legislative and the other is educational. So I think that this might be a great opportunity for the borough to do a borough wide educational program about what having trees does for you. And there are several advertising agencies inside our borough. And I think that it might be a great opportunity to get something professional done so that over a planned program, maybe for six months or eight months or a year, we could educate the residents of Clark Summit Borough about the benefits of maintaining or replacing trees, separate from necessarily the financial benefit. I think that when people choose to chop a tree down, they do it because they really don't understand what that tree is giving to them, to the air, to the environment, to the soil. They just see it as a leaf generator. So think about any time you want to change human behavior. Using a seatbelt, not driving when you're drunk, not smoking. Those are all basic human behaviors that have been changed societally. Not legislatively necessarily, although sometimes that's an ancillary piece, but primarily educationally. And I'm not sure how many people will take the time to go to this really great site that Shannon shared. I want to go back and visit again, but I'm not sure that a lot of people will do that. Whereas if they have an educational campaign and you get Lamar billboards to donate some of the digital space that's right on the edge of Clark Summit, and you get one or two of the ad agencies that are right inside the borough. I think that we could do a lot to help people see the issue. I think that we could do a lot to help people see the issue as a positive influence in their lives rather than a negative. So that's all I wanted to say, that I just want us to remember either change what people do by law or by choice.
Good point, Carol. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Virginia, is the, uh, is the, the borough's, uh, Shade Tree Commission still in business?
Oh, yeah. And they're, they've been very involved. They were, they were involved in this map that Shannon is showing us. Um, they also have, um, been involved in, in a, um, urban tree canopy, uh, plan where they've committed to the borough getting 85 new trees a year. And they have been trying very hard to make that goal every year since 2009.
As the library president, I had to approve the request to plant some trees on our library property because you know where we are. And, and I, I did that. I said, go ahead. I don't think that's happened yet. There was some kind of a snafu or some kind of problem, but maybe the Shade Tree Commission could be the point people for doing something that is a little bit more proactive along the lines of what Shannon is sharing with us. But that is a spoonful of sugar so that the residents are getting small bits of information regularly that are targeting, that's targeting an increase in their awareness about the significance of keeping this green stuff.
A- and I like Virginia's idea that Borough Council can also tie that in to the fact that you're already paying the rain tax, you just don't know it. Uh, and I think if people begin to understand that, it may help, uh, the Shade Tree Commission, I'm very, very supportive of them. Um, but, you know, quite honestly, I think it's going to take all of us. Uh, there are a lot of things that, you know, the Shade Tree, uh, Chair lives right behind me. Uh, we, we do talk about this stuff and it's going to take a cooperative collaborative effort, uh, with planning, probably Borough Council and the Shade Tree, uh, because they have somewhat limited functionality. They have even more limited functionality than we do, but I think we can all be supportive uh, and help move some things forward, uh, through, in the borough.
Maybe that's the next thing to talk to council about then Shannon, is actually bringing an ad hoc committee together with representatives from all of those entities and the single targeted goal of using disparate but connected information sources to up the ante in terms of how much our residents understand about all the pieces in the, in the conversation.
I think, I, I want to go back. I am not at all against what preserving trees, planting trees, using trees to our environmental benefit. I, I think, I agree with what Carol said. I'm not sure it's a planning commission purview. I, I just don't know that it is without council's approval, but bringing it to council would also open the door to do what has been suggested, an ad hoc committee or gathering the groups together that are necessary. I just, I just don't know that, I don't know that it would be money well spent to put it into a development ordinance with.
Why don't, why don't I write a letter to council from the Planning Commission, kind of summarizing our discussion tonight about low impact development and the trees and the benefits. Um, and, you know, make a suggestion to them that, first of all, with regard to the lid, if they want it, let us know. We can work on it. We won't do anything until they tell us. But it, but we think that maybe there should be a proactive plan towards the trees and, uh, our suggestion is the ad hoc committee. Tell them and the ball's in their court. If you want, I'll write something up. I'll draft it, show it to John. If John's good, he can sign it and we'll forward it on.
I think that's great.
Okay.
I do too. Looking at that map, it's kind of astounding how, like, how many areas do not have trees identified though. It's astounding.
All right. Well, I will write something up, John. I'll send it to you, uh, probably Friday.
Very good.
Okay.
I'm just astounded by this map. Thank you very much for really sharing with us, Shannon.
You're muted, Shannon.
I'm sorry. I was gonna say, thank you, John. I, I, you know, I, I think it's, uh, it, it's a great thing. It's been one of those things that's quiet. It's been quietly lurking there for three or four years and nobody even knows about it. Uh, I think it could be an important, uh, resource, uh, for the borough.
And, and I'm wondering whether, for John Kuzista, whether or not if someone made a inquiry of the Lackawanna County Conservation District, whether they would provide some answers to the neighbors about the, uh, timbering that's near your property. That's the, that's the first place I would probably look.
Say again, which, which?
The Lackawanna County Conservation District.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it might be worth a letter to, uh, South Ab too, to ask them if they're aware of what's going on. Because if they're timbering a significant area, there needs to be an erosion control plan. So, yeah, going back to Michael, there should be, uh, there should be a plan with the, uh, with the Conservation District.
Is something that should come from us, Virginia?
Well, it's not in our community. So, uh, I could certainly tell them, make sure that they're aware of it. But beyond that, we have no say. But I'd be happy to write a letter to them.
Would that be more appropriately coming from council or would that be acceptable coming from us?
I can just send it from the Borough Manager's office.
Okay.
I'll just do it.
Good to be the king or queen.
As a matter of fact, John, I think that they're selling the timber that they're cutting down, aren't they? Don't they have some, uh, piles along the side of Oakford?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. They're, they're not doing that just for exercise. They, they had a tremendous amount of pile lumber, you know, logs and they're, they're, all the large ones are gone, but there's new piles now. And one of the things that I was a little bit worried about, as you, I don't know if I'd said this before or not, but as you come along the road there, uh, they started to take trees that are right alongside the road. Uh, so I'm, I'm almost, I almost feel like they're going to take them all down eventually. And, uh, I, I, I just don't like what's going on there. Uh, but again, it's not ours. But if there's something we could do to energize a conversation or something, such as been suggested a little while ago, I think it's a good idea.
Well, the, uh, the, one of the supervisors for South Abington Township, um, Len, uh, Gorney, uh, when you address that, uh, Virginia, uh, he may, because he's also one of the people that's on, uh, they're, they're represented to the Sapa Commission as well. Uh, and that might be something to discuss because this would be an inter municipality type issue, uh, that this certainly affects, uh, you know, other municipalities and it may down the line as well. Um, you know, o- other municipalities also, depending on how far they're cutting. Uh, you know, if they keep going down the road cut there, uh, they'll soon be in Waverly.
Yeah, well, definitely that the creek down there feeds into the, uh, Chesapeake Bay ultimately. So those trees, removal of those trees are going to have an impact. Unfortunately, I don't believe, um, Clark, South Abington Township has an MS, uh, is required to have an MS four plan like we are.
Well, that's amazing.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Virginia, is this, is this part of the Tuncanah Creek watershed?
I believe so. I believe going out that way it is.
I have that, that's an area of concern flooding all the time.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I will definitely get working on this the next couple of days and I'll forward you guys the results of my work. So you all know what's happening. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, good.
Thank you.
Come. John, thanks for bringing it up.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anything else that anyone would like to discuss?
I was just. Let me, let me suggest one more thing and I, and I don't want to take up everybody's night here, uh, but, um,
Well, we're not going anywhere. Sorry to interrupt you, John.
Where I'm probably gonna go, go do some shoveling, so.
Shannon, wherever you're sitting, it looks like you could go wherever you want. The rest is.
I, I told my neighbor that, that I have a heated driveway and all that gets him going with the, uh, that I heat it up to. I'm sorry, John, because.
I have one too. It's called July.
Yeah.
Along the line, uh, you know, I, I do drive up above my development a lot up in that area because I'm trying to avoid the highway and coming out onto the highway and whatever, but be that as it may, uh, I've been noticing, I don't know if we brought up a conversation about signs, people putting up signs in the borough. I, maybe I was dreaming this, but there's a tremendous amount of signs in everybody's lot. Um, has to do with, you know, graduating 2020 and all of that sort of thing. But what I noticed lately is that I, I think that's becoming an industry and I think that's going to become something that before you know it, you won't see lawns, you'll see signs in everybody's, uh, property. Uh, and maybe I'm, you know, imagining too much here, but I did notice something on, uh, School Street, uh, which runs parallel to the, to the borough and it runs out into Grove. Uh, and one of the properties up there, there's some of these signs and the one is actually advertising. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, I, I didn't see exactly, but I think it's, they're looking for school bus drivers. And it's advertising in the, in this lot, in this private property. And, uh, you know, I, I've seen all kinds of signs like that and I'm just, we did talk about this before because I remember now, but I, I just bring it up because maybe it's not our purvey or anything else. But it seems to me that, you know, we could be overcome and overrun with that sort of thing. And like, what control do we have over? Do we have any? I think we do. Uh, but, uh, anyhow, I just wanted to bring that up because that's something that I noticed also.
Is that School Street in our borough across from the administrative building?
Yeah, oh yeah, definitely. Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah. I mean, I, I just happened, that one there, I thought it would, everything else was, you know, congratulations to our seniors now. They could see all of that. And I'm hoping that that goes away at some point, but they just keep multiplying. And, but then now if they're going to be advertising something on their lawn, that's another story, I think. But anyhow. Enough said.
Well, Jen and I will look into it.
Okay.
And I was just gonna quickly mention, uh, Virginia, I don't know what the status is, but just so that everybody knows, everybody put in an enormous amount of work on the Sapa rewrite of the zoning ordinances. As I understand it, that has been adopted. Uh, we're, we're working on that, but, uh, the borough of Clark Summit did adopt that. So thank all of you for your tremendous, tremendous focus on that. And we are, to the best of my knowledge, the first of the nine communities to do that. Uh, and I will say that I think other communities are realizing, uh, at this point, wow, there is a lot more to this. So I'm really glad that we got it done when we did. Uh, the, the rest of the communities, uh, we just met, uh, this past week. The rest of the communities will be doing adoption roughly through February and very, very early March. I think it's the first uh, week in March, but, uh, we're already, uh, pretty much good to go. And I, again, want to thank all of you uh, for your diligence and hard work on, on that project.
It's called taking, taking advantage of a pandemic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it was good. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, everyone. We really went through that. I agree. It was a lot of hard work and I, I'm happy that we were able to get, jump on it and get through it as quickly as we did.
And if I can share, I think Borough Council was extremely pleased with it. They basically passed it as we handed it to them. They made, uh, two very minor changes, which were very consistent with every, every, you know, it was not, uh, you know, it was things that we probably would have looked at and said, oh yeah, we, we didn't realize that. So I was really, uh, glad that, that they took our, our recommendation uh, as solidly as they did.
Boy, good point. All right. Is there anything else for this evening?
Nobody shovels snow.
Nobody shovel snow?
I'm not.
Just let them out?
Well, I would, John, you, you might be young enough to shovel snow, but everybody else don't shovel snow.
I have a 10 horsepower snow thrower. I told my daughter, I don't care what's going on. I got that snow thrower ready for tomorrow. It's parked in the garage. I don't care if it's in your way or not.
That's a beautiful thing.
Mm-hmm. And so John Durden, remember, take that snow blower around the corner and there I'll be.
It's certainly a good way to keep neighbors happy.
Isn't it though?
It is, Carol. I'm with you on that.
Not if they hear it running at six in the morning.
John, I'm not.
You can come at five in the morning. I don't care.
I'm not a member of the Planning Commission, but I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mike. I think I love you. That's a great thing.
I'm glad somebody does. Thank you.
By the way, I think it should be noted that, uh, I, I drive by also, uh, John Durden's home and I've been there a couple of times lately. And what a beautiful enhancement to his.
Yes, indeed.
Oh, it is.
It looks like it's been there from the beginning. It's just very, very nice done.
Yeah.
Nice job.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. I'll, I'll share that with my wife, Joanne.
I thought into that.
It's lovely. It's lovely.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a long time.
You could keep the snow blower in the porta potty.
We're gonna put lights on it.
Good idea.
Christmas. We're gonna put lights on that, the dumpster and the driveway.
I love it. That's great. That's great.
I saw that on the news. Somebody decorated, a porta potty was out somewhere and they decorated it. Wrapping paper and bows and stuff like that. So it looked a little better in the neighborhood.
With, with somebody inside, so.
Santa, Santa does have to travel long distances without us to stop.
Yes, he does.
And it does get more and more difficult when you.
Oh, gosh.
All right. Well, is there, thanks everyone again for the wonderful comments, uh, but I, I would like to adjourn for this evening. If there's nothing else, we could, uh, all turn in and enjoy the.
John, I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
And I'll, yeah, second.
Carol's third, made a third. All in favor?
Yes.
Bye.
Yes.
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 Five-oh, have a wonderful holiday season, everybody. We'll see you.
Have a happy holiday season, everybody.
Yes.
Thank you.
My pleasure to know you. Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.